Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2013 at 7:00 PM. Time is actually 7:10. We are convening hearing council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We'll call the board members, please.
Mr. Seifried.
Present.
Mr. Ernst.
Present.
Mr. Eich.
Present.
Mr. Castor.
Present.
Mr. James.
Present.
Mr. Prevattel.
He's excused. He wasn't timely notified. All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
Fine, very good. Before we call for the approval of minutes, I want to congratulate members of the Planning Commission who have been appointed for this next two-year term. I understand our appointees are Gene Castor and Charlie Ernst and Jason James and Bill Prevattel. Now, unfortunately, the city clerk didn't let us, didn't let staff know until today, so in the case of Mr. Prevattel, we welcome him back to the Planning Commission, and we apologize for the fact he wasn't given his packet and duly notified for tonight's meeting. We look forward to seeing him next month. We publicly want to thank Maureen Horowitz for her years of dedicated service to the Planning Commission. She was always an insightful and contributing member of the Commission. We'd also like to thank Bonnie Schwartzbaum for her services to the Commission, and as with regret, we acknowledge they were not reappointed for this current term. So now we go forward. We are the five guys. I propose a hamburger chain, but I think somebody else beat us to that. And if there are no amendments, we call for the approval of minutes for July 7th. Oh, before I get to the approval, I'm remiss in failing to acknowledge the passing of Clarence Patterson, former city manager for the City of North Miami, Director of Public Works here at the city, Director of Public Works in at City of Miami, and he's worked for the City of Opa-locka, he worked for the City of Miami Springs. He has a, he had a lifetime of service in public service. He was highly regarded, highly respected by everyone who came in contact with him, and his leadership certainly is missed. Staff will notify the planning commissioners by email of the planned services, and we certainly would expect to be there and would look forward to seeing all members of the Planning Commission there. All right. At this time, let's call for the approval of minutes from our July 2nd meeting.
Chairman, I move for approval.
Ernst moves for approval. Mr. Eich seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, we sign the official copy. Pass it to our secretary. All right, we have no continued public hearings, and our first item then tonight is item PC 14-13. This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of North Miami, Florida, amending the City of North Miami's comprehensive plan pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes by updating the future land use map in order to assign appropriate land use categories to newly annexed properties in an area bordered on the west side by the Biscayne Canal, on the east side by Northeast 4th Avenue, on the south side by Northeast 131st Street, and on the north side by Northeast 135th Street, otherwise known as Area 3, further authorizing the transmittal of the comprehensive plan amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and all other review agencies as required under Section 163.3184 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, separability, codification, and an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Tanya Wilson Sejour with the Community Planning and Development Department. The staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed ordinance to amend the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, in order to assign the appropriate land use categories to the newly annexed properties in the area. The area is bordered on the west side by the Biscayne Canal, on the east side by Northeast 4th Avenue, on the south side by Northeast 131st Street, and on the north side by Northeast 135th Street, area is otherwise known as Annexation Area 3, and to transmit said amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and all other applicable agencies as required by Florida statute, Chapter 163. Just to provide some background information for the board, Chapter 163 of the Florida statute requires that each local government prepares a comprehensive plan and future land use map, and Section 163 3184 specifically includes guidelines addressing how said plans must be amended over time as land use changes occur at municipal level. On October 22nd of 2011, the mayor and council passed and adopted Resolution 2011-150, authorizing city administration to file a formal annexation application with Miami-Dade County for the area previously described and known as Annexation Area 3. Attached is a location map. Consistent with the city's Code of Ordinances Land Development Regulations, the LDR, a temporary designation of Residential Estate District, or R1, was assigned to the entire area. The city subsequently transmitted an annexation application and report for Area 3 to Miami-Dade County for review and consideration. And on April 2nd of 2013, the Miami-Dade Board of County Commissioners passed and adopted Ordinance Number 13-31, approving the annexation of Area 3 into the city in accordance with Section 6.04B of the Miami-Dade County Charter and Chapter 20 of the Miami-Dade County Code of Ordinances. The adoption of Annexation Area 3 necessitated not only the rezoning of the parcels to be consistent with the built environment, but also the need to amend the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, in order to assign the appropriate land use designation to each parcel within the subject area to conform with the proposed zoning designations. Attached is a copy of the proposed land use designations recommended for each parcel based on the former county land use designation as well as the current built environment. Staff has provided an exhibit for the board showing the proposed land use for the lands that have been described in the designated area. As you understand from the report, this area has already been annexed into the City of North Miami, so technically it is North Miami property, not property owned, but it is within the city limits of the City of North Miami. So this request that's before you is basically procedural. Now that these lands have been designated with a folio, North Miami folio, they now need to have a land use designation, and that land use needs to be transmitted to the state planning agency just to satisfy the requirements of Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. So staff is recommending approval of this item at this time and is available to answer any questions the board may have.
All right, thank you very much. Does any member of the Commission have a question for staff? If not, we'll open the public hearing.
I can wait till after public.
All right.
I was going to ask, we're not voting now on the zoning, what we're going to put in there, we're just voting on, that's the next.
The next one will, the next one will involve the zoning. Right now, you're voting on the land use.
Okay. Now, you say the land use, just for my own clarification, you're talking about either residential or business, but are we talking, is that what we're talking about?
Just a quick update. As you may recall, as we've had other amendments in the past, the city has two maps. We have a land use, a future land use map. We also have a zoning map. And based on state requirements, there has to be a land use designation for every property within the city, and there has to be a complementing zoning designation.
Okay, because what I'm looking at, I'm seeing on this here on the annexation, I'm seeing high density residential, low, medium density.
Correct.
We're not voting on that right now.
It's for each of the uses that you're going to designate on said lands.
I'm sorry?
It's for each of the uses, the types of uses, land uses, that will be designated on each property within the annexation area. So for instance, in the legend, you'll see the red area is consistent with a commercial designation, the green area with community facility, high density residential in the brown areas, low density for the yellow, and so forth. So the consideration before you tonight is to adopt that map so it can be incorporated in the future land use map that the city has, and to transmit that to the state as required in the Florida statute. So it's more procedural.
To follow up that question, though, if anything was to change within that designated land area zoning-wise, then another map would have to then be adopted, so.
Correct. If after tonight you adopt, if after tonight you adopt this map, and there's a future request to amend any parcel within that area, it comes before you again, as we did with Causeway Village and some of the others you've seen over the years. So basically, right now, if a developer were to move forward, there's no land use designation on these lands, so we have to make sure that the city has this incorporated in its future land use map, so at least it doesn't hinder any development. And we actually do have a developer that has approached the city in this time period between when it was annexed and now when we're trying to do the procedural designation, so it's a time-sensitive matter, of course.
So what you're saying, though, as we adopt the map, before we get to the next item, we are accepting all the current zoning designations that were, are within that annexed area.
There technically are none. I mean, the county had its own designation. The county had a land use designation, and it had a zoning designation. So now that the lands have been brought in, they need to have a city-appropriate designation.
Correct. Maybe, we have just, what this is, we have just embraced new lands.
Correct.
Right?
I understand.
So we're now increasing our boundaries by, by this number of acreage.
Right.
The designations that are provided before you for your approval are those assigned that are compatible with the adjoining areas that are already within, have been within the City of North Miami. So it's, it's a compatibility. We can't, we have to embrace that new property, those new lands, consistent, apply the use that is consistent to the uses already there, that are there.
In the built environment.
That are around it, that surround the.
And built on those lands.
But in other words, we're not adopting what the county zoned that for. In other words, if it was in Dade County, which I understand it was unincorporated Dade County, if they had existing zoning designations for that, that's all thrown out.
Correct.
In fact.
No land void.
Yeah, and then temporarily, while, while the annexation process goes through and is completed, they're temporarily designated as R1s, which.
Okay, so it's a temporary.
Without a land use, which is, yeah, temporary, so this is designating.
Right.
You know, the appropriate, using the appropriate designations for the newly acquired lands.
All right, and then moving forward after that, if this is, if this is so approved by our panel, then the next step would be in our hands as to, as to how we would designate the zoning within that area.
Correct. That's the very following, that's the second item on this agenda. So that's the zoning map. This is the future land use, which operates as an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Got it.
And then the next level is, is the zoning map, and that's the subsequent item.
Understand. Okay, thank you. May I just, one of the questions I see here, and I'm a little bit concerned with, I see high-density residential, it looks like it runs from 131st Street to I don't know how far north, and if I'm not mistaken, on the other side of the canal, as you go west, that's all single-family homes over there on, on the west side of the canal, so.
We're not touching that Commissioner Eich. That's actually within North Miami currently. That area that says low-density residential.
High-density residential.
On the east side?
That exists now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's county. That's the county.
It's now North Miami.
But we have taken that over now. That I understand.
Yes.
But now, if we vote for this, does that mean it's going to stay as high-density residential?
Correct. Based on our analysis.
It stays as high-density residential.
Correct. Based on our analysis, the built environment is reflected off the high-density residential use in or land use category. That's a compatible use, and we don't want a downzone or reduce the land use density on any of these sites that have already been constructed.
I guess my.
So it's the most compatible.
There's nothing built there. When you say high-density residential.
No, there is.
No, there are apartments there. An entire, an entire segment.
Those are two-story apartment buildings that are there.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Now, when we say high res, give me, give me our description of high-density residential.
Twenty-five dwelling units per acre. Twenty-five dwelling units per acre is the high-density category.
Those are apartment buildings that are there right now.
Correct.
Okay. And then what's north of that, the community facility, what is that?
That's your Aspire Charter School.
That's the school.
And it fits into community facility.
And then north of that is the, the gas station.
Correct, which is commercial.
And then across the street is.
And then the little triangle is the park.
And shopping center.
Right, and that's, that's another apartment complex across the street is on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually a mixed-use complex.
Not a problem.
With residential and retail.
Okay, thank you, you clarified.
So the current uses are accurately reflect the designations that are before you for your approval. We couldn't very well allocate an R1 designation to that area.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand, right, thank you, thank you. What I was concerned about, and as many years as I patrol that area, it dawned on me that there are apartments there that exist, and what I was kind of concerned about, we said high-density, and thank you for the clarification, twenty-five units per acre, was I hate like heck to see a five, six-story building go up when you're living on the other side of the canal, and you have a beautiful home over there, and you got this monstrosity that you're looking at. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, of course, Aspire has already built a four-story classroom building there.
Oh, it's up there?
Aspire has already erected a four-story classroom building there.
Nothing can do better.
You know, that's, all right, let's open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Please approach the microphone, give us your name, your residential address.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ann Cates, C-A-T-E-S. I live at 13939 Northwest 1st Avenue in the area commonly known as Biscayne Gardens. I'm standing before you this evening knowing full well that I have no standing to be here. I don't live in North Miami. I've been a resident of Biscayne Gardens since 1965, and since 1997, I've been active in the, both the Incorporation Steering Committee and then the Municipal Advisory Committee, trying to make Biscayne Gardens its own city. So before the moratorium was placed by the county commission in 2007, our MAC had gotten to the point where all we had to do was our conceptual agreement, and we had a budget that had to be approved, and then the moratorium was placed, so that froze everything for the past six years. Now the commission has lifted the moratorium, our MAC has been reinstated, and we're proceeding to incorporate. I have a map that shows, well, by way of history, back in 1948, the residents of Biscayne Gardens filed a charter with the Secretary of State outlining boundaries for Biscayne Gardens. Now I have no idea of the legalities of that charter, but they did set boundaries, they named the area Biscayne Gardens, and of course, we're on unincorporated Dade County, so we're, we're part of the municipal service area that the county services. Our boundaries ended at Northeast 6th Avenue on the east, but then, at that point in time of the incorporation process, and this was after Aventura and Pine Crest and Palmetto Bay, after they all, the newer incorporations became cities, and the county commission, the mantra of the county commission was thou shalt not create any enclaves, no donut holes, you know, no areas that would be left unincorporated. So we took whatever area was left, and this is what our boundaries look like. And the little piece that you just took is not shown on this map. I call us a turtle, and we have two feet. Now we only have one, because that's the area that you have just sought to annex. And really, I don't know what North Miami wants with it, because the revenue is $87,000 and the cost of services is $87,000, so it's a wash. It's not like it's going to bring more income into your community, and the residents are less than 250, so it's not going to increase your population by all that much. And this was an area that got annexed without the people being allowed to vote, but that's what the process is, and you followed the process, so now it's well on its way. In fact, I thought it was already yours. I didn't know it had to come to the Planning Commission.
It is ours. This is the process.
Correction, the annexation has already taken place, and it has been approved by.
By the commission on April 2nd. Yeah, we, we were unaware that that was going on, but of course, now, as you may or may not know, North Miami is looking to take other great big chunks of Biscayne Gardens, and if they, if they succeed, we may no longer be viable as a city. We're five square miles, we have over 32,000 people, we do have some commercial, you just cherry-picked a little strip of commercial there on Griffin, the VP station, grocery, the laundromat. I appeared before the commission the other night and made this same plea, that asking North Miami to be a good neighbor and hold up on these annexations and give us a chance for self-determination. I'm not saying that if it goes to a vote of our 32, well, I don't know how many registered voters we have, but if they would even vote for incorporation, and of course, if we lost, then, then we would be up for grabs. But right now, it's just, I'm just so disheartened, because we've worked since 1997 to get to this point, and now North Miami is thwarting our efforts, and I don't see any great benefit to the city of North Miami on these parcels. So my reason for being here is just to plead be a good neighbor and let us, let us have our opportunity to become a city, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Last call, and so we will close the public hearing. All right, it's now time for commission discussion, and I'll move to my right and ask Mr. Ernst to lead off, if he has any comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I think the concerns that I addressed earlier when we questioned staff, I really have no other questions at this point.
All right, thank you. Mr. Eich, do you have any questions?
No, no.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. James?
No questions.
You have none. All right, Mr. Castor has absented himself from the dais. We still have a maintained forum, we should call for a vote. All right, if there's no further comments, then all in favor of adopting the, the land use map as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? This item is adopted. All right, now we go to PC 15-13.
Who, who second, who made the motion, just for clarification?
For the record, if we need to go back, I moved for approval.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Eich, seconded by Mr. Eich.
That's what I meant to do when I was making my statement, I apologize.
All right, we can, we can work around that. All right. Now we're up to the rezoning and issues for this area. Mr. Castor, welcome back.
While you were gone.
Yes, while you were gone, we, we adopted the first item.
Okay, so move.
And now we go into the zoning issue. This is item PC-13, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of North Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending the city's official zoning map referenced in Article 1, Section 1-106, to reflect the rezoning of the newly annexed properties bordered on the west side by the Biscayne Canal, on the east side by Northeast 4th Avenue, on the south side by Northeast 131st Street, and on the northeast side by Northeast 135th Street, otherwise known as Area 3, in order to assign appropriate zoning categories that are consistent with the city's land development regulations and comprehensive plan, providing for conflicts, separability, codification, and an effective date. Staff recommendations, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is essentially related to the previous request. You just adopted the request to amend the future land use map, and this adoption is to amend the city's zoning map. I'm going to read the staff recommendation into the record nonetheless. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed ordinance to amend the city's official zoning map, referenced in Article 1, Section 1-106, to reflect the rezoning of the newly annexed properties in the area bordered on the west side by the Biscayne Canal, on the east side by Northeast 4th Avenue, on the south side by Northeast 131st Street, and on the north side by Northeast 135th Street. The area, as we recognize, is known as Annexation Area 3. Staff believes that this request ensures consistency between the city's official zoning map and the future land use map, and is recommending approval of this item at this time.
We've already had some commission comments the first half. Does any of the commissioners have questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
If you could open the public. I do.
All right.
I'm sorry, I would rather wait till after the.
No problem. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Last call. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is welcome to step forward. Yes, ma'am, state your name and address.
Ann Cates, 13939 Northwest 1st Avenue, Miami, and I'll just adopt what I said previously. I realize that it's a fait accompli and a done deal. I'm really here to get educated on the process, which I now know I'm totally ignorant about the process. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Not at all, not at all.
Seeing no one else in line at this time, public hearing is closed. Commission comments. Again, I turn to my right, Mr. Ernst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For staff, I'm looking at the, the planned unit, the PU designation, is that the.
It's public use. Public use.
That's public use?
Correct.
So in other words, that was not a planned unit, public use.
No, 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 no. PD is your plan development.
I was looking at.
Yeah, it's open space, parks, government use and schools.
Right, okay, that's a school.
If you look at the, if, so if you look at the previous map, the one you adopted, you'll see the appropriate land use designations for now the zoning districts that are your, you're about to vote on.
Yes, so they're exactly the same as the other one?
The zoning districts reflect the, the underlying use that you have approved, so community facility is now public use.
All right, but what I'm saying, though, is we're not, we're not mirroring what the county had, had zoning-wise. We're, we're establishing our own.
Unique designations, correct.
Designations.
Correct.
Even though they're similar.
Yes, sir. Based on the existing, pre-existing use, these are our City of North Miami LDRs.
Right, okay, we have not changed anything as far as what's residential, residential for.
That would be a text amendment, and we're not doing that.
And that would have to come before you.
So anything within that property would, in other words, it falls under that.
Yes, sir.
We are not changing anything.
Yes, sir.
When we, we adopt.
Actually, what you're doing this evening is, is bringing them into our code.
Correct.
It's to effectuate our LDRs upon these newly annexed properties.
Correct, but what we're not doing is re-engineering anything that.
No, that, that hasn't happened this evening, and perhaps at another evening, but not tonight.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make clear on the record, is that we're merely designating what those properties would be consistent with our, our zoning regulation.
Correct.
There's abandoned property, if I remember right, and I'm trying to see, was that in the commercial 1 designation that is currently abandoned, that faces 135th Street? There's abandoned property. Street? There's abandoned property, there's the billboard sign next to the shopping, little shopping plaza-
The vacant lands that front on one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, those are zoned C one, proposed zoning of C one.
I'm sorry, Tanya, I missed-
The vacant lands?
Yes.
That front on northeast one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, the proposed zoning is C one. I think that's the area that you're referring to, that has the billboards.
All right. All the way across to, I don't know what avenue that would be.
To the nursing home, which is R five.
That would probably be Third Avenue, then?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay. And then there's a nursing home.
That would be R five, that's your limit.
R five, and that's still within our newly annexed property.
That's in the newly annexed area, so that's coming in, yeah.
R four is no more different than R one or R two, correct?
The major difference is that the R four allows for duplexes.
Duplexes.
Based on our analysis and driving through that area, we recognize that many of the lots currently have duplexes.
Right.
And in order to avoid downzoning them and putting a designation of R two, the appropriate designation really would have been R four, which is what you see here.
All right. And then, let's see, I think that was all I had with regarding what's within that zoning areas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ernst. Mr. Castor?
Yes, I have something to say. Obviously, there is some positive to the city in obtaining these piece of land or properties. The concern I have, or the question, perhaps, you know, staff can enlighten me, as far as security, the police staff, is there going to be any effect at all?
Yes.
Because that's my concern.
Yeah, the area is now serviced by the city of North Miami, and that was actually one of the compelling arguments when we transmitted the application to Miami Dade County. Previously, if there was an emergency call or a nine-one-one call issued from the subject area, North Miami Police is only three miles away. But because it was an unincorporated area, they would have to call, and I'm sure Commissioner Eas is familiar with this, they would have to call Miami Dade County Police. That was twenty miles away. So in many instances, North Miami Police could arrive at the property but had no jurisdiction to assist. So one of the arguments North Miami made is, we can more efficiently service this area in terms of emergency calls and nine-one-one outreach to the neighborhood, since clearly we're closer and we're first responders instead of the county that's a whole twenty miles away.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're going to be okay with that, so.
We currently do it.
I think Mr. Each could back me up on this. I've lived in, on the other side of the canal, in the Breeze Strip area, and I know for a fact that a lot of our police would always have to respond to calls over there and then get over there and find out that it's not-
North Miami.
It's not North Miami. A lot of people were on the assumption that it was North Miami because of that, and they would, you know, a lot of inaction couldn't be taken care of, especially in the apartment buildings or some of the residential areas back there.
Well, we would have to take the call and eat the cost, because we do have with the county mutual aid agreements, and, you know, so it turns out that we would be the closest in proximity, so we would respond in an emergency. And, you know, it's really outside the jurisdictions, but because of these agreements, we would be called anyway.
Would we anticipate any increase in resources as far as additional patrol personnel being hired, or-
Based on the analysis that was done by our police staff, because one of the justications you have to make is that you have sufficient police staff to service the area, it was determined that there would be no need for additional personnel on the police staff, because this area is so tiny, it could be absorbed into the current operation.
Okay, all right.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. James, I'll let you go next. Do you have any questions or comments on this?
No questions and no comments.
Then we will wrap this up with Mr. Each, if you'll please enlighten us.
No questions, no comments. I make a motion that we accept staff's report and pass item fifteen dash thirteen.
And I'll second.
Right. We have a motion made by Mr. Each, seconded by Mr. Castor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. All right. Now we're on to PC eleven dash thirteen. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine of the Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article Four, Division Three, entitled Non-Residential Districts, specifically at Section four dash three oh two, entitled Uses permitted to establish recreation/entertainment outdoor as a special exception use in the M one zoning district to encourage economic growth consistent with the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and an effective date. Staff recommendations, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed ordinance to amend Article Four, Section four dash three oh two of the city's land development regulations to permit recreation/entertainment outdoor as a special exception use in the M one industrial zoning district, and forward said changes to city council for final consideration. I just outlined the purpose and intent of this application. Applicant Michael Deizer, who owns an M one industrial zone property at eighteen ninety northeast one forty-sixth Street in the city of North Miami, is as a source of amending chapter twenty-nine, Section four dash three oh two, entitled Uses permitted to establish recreation/entertainment outdoor as a special exception use in the M one zoning district, in order to provide a recreational use to the public that is not within an enclosed building, and further encourage business expansion in the city's industrial district. Just to provide some additional background on this item, the applicant currently operates the Deizer Car Museum at two thousand northeast one forty-sixth Street, located on the east side of the subject property, and as such, the applicant seeks to establish a drive-in movie theater to provide an additional recreational activity that will complement the existing car museum and attract new visitors to the area. Based on Article Seven definitions of the Land Development Regulation, such uses are categorized as recreation/entertainment outdoor, which is defined as, "A business which is open to the public where customers pay for the use of recreational facilities or equipment on site but not within an enclosed building." Although the LDR provides a definition for the aforementioned use in Article Seven, recreation/entertainment outdoor uses is not listed anywhere in the permitted use chart. Customarily, this type of use would be permitted through a special exception process under the now repealed zoning code. If approved, the current request would permit recreation/entertainment by special exception in the M one district. Staff has provided an analysis in the staff report, and based on our review of the application requests by Mr. Deizer, we find that the request is consistent with Section three dash one zero zero four of the Land Development Regulations. The staff is recommending approval of this item at this time. The applicant's agent is here and wishes to speak on this item at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right. At this time, if the agent would care to stand and identify himself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Shoshan. Do you need my address?
Please do.
Two hundred Leslie Drive, Hallandale, Florida. Mr. Deizer would like, Mr. Deizer and his team would like to thank you for the opportunity of reviewing the application. We feel that it would help further assist the development of the economic growth in the area, as we are constantly looking for expanding the museum area. As you know, we're looking for other opportunities in the future, but at this time, we feel that a drive-in would further enhance the whole concept of the museum and entertainment in the area. And we look to bring more people and more activities and employ more people. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does any member of the commission have a question for the gentleman?
May I just go-
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Each.
I was up there, that thing is a pretty interesting concept, you know, since, I don't know if there are any more outdoor movie theaters left. I remember going to them as a kid.
Right.
And this is part of the motif of the museum. How are you going to, which way is the screen going to be facing, or have you come up with that yet, or are you going to-
At this, yes, at this time, we're thinking that it would face north. We don't want, there is traffic on one forty-sixth Street, so we didn't think that it would be a good idea to have it on the south side, because we don't want people driving in-
And looking.
And interrupting traffic and so forth. So we're thinking facing north would be the right position at this time.
And is it going to be in the style of the fifties, or is it-
Yes. Well, with the exception of the new technology where you have remote, remote listening devices, and you know, it's going to be, you tune in your radio into a channel.
To a certain station, is that right?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Rather than having a speaker stand.
It's going to be, you see, one hundred and twenty-five cars I see in here.
I'm not sure, yeah, about one hundred and twenty.
One hundred and twenty-five? You're going to have, I guess, a projection booth and all that?
Yes, exactly.
And snack stand, and a bar, and all that good stuff.
Well, maybe a temporary kiosk or something, or, we'd like to get the community involved, like, the whole idea is that you have, in the day, you have the museum.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're constantly looking for adding entertainment there. Right now, we're looking at other things that would draw more people besides cars, because not everybody is interested in cars, you know. So there's other things that we're looking to involve, incorporate, including, you know, now the drive-in, maybe in the future, some activities for the young, the younger crowd, such as sport activities or gaming, things like that.
If I may ask you.
Yes.
Since you mentioned the community, did you get the community involved in terms of asking questions, suggestions, and perhaps, you know?
I'm sorry?
Did you survey the community?
Did you survey the community? Did you get them involved, as you said you would like to?
Not, no. No, I can't say we did.
It's just a thought.
It's a good idea.
Perhaps it might give you some good, you know-
It's a good idea. I offered Mr. Deizer at the time to potentially ask the city to do maybe a joint venture in advertising, because you guys have access to all, the entire population in the community, and you probably have weekly or monthly literatures that goes out there, and together get the committee involved in what we're doing and knowing what we're doing there, so they can further get involved in the whole operation. So.
What is it that you built over there on Biscayne Boulevard? Is that going to be a gift shop, or?
That's a gift shop. Since the property is not on Biscayne Boulevard, and exposure is limited, and that's why he purchased that property, to further enhance accessibility, and hopefully in the future, I'm looking now to come again and ask for maybe a sign or some sort of taller indication of where we are. So people, because it's hard to find where the museum, you know where the museum is, it's just in the back of-
Of the lecture.
Of Biscayne, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right by ferries, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you took over an old gas station on Biscayne Boulevard?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
I just mentioned it.
And they just put all the chrome-
Yes, exactly.
So that is sort of like a front, or, how would you tie that in with your business now?
Well, they're going, it's not a hundred percent done, but there'll be some car displays there, parts of the museum, and they'll be rotating. Maybe sometimes you'll see a James Bond car, and sometimes you'll see, you know, Hollywood movie car, and people can come, stop by, take tickets, go into the museum. And it's in the city of North Miami Beach, by the way, that gas station.
Oh, that is. Okay. I didn't know, because I know it's a big stall through there.
Right, very close.
And I'm always confused, you know, which property we're looking at tonight.
He actually purchased the property also north of it, right next to it. It was a mattress store.
Right. Okay. And that's in North Miami Beach?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Still.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, then we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is welcome to step forward. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this item? And hearing no thundering herds, seeing no rising cloud of dust, we shall close the public hearing. Well, gentlemen, you've heard it, you've asked your questions. If you think we're ready, the chair would call for a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the staff's report and I second it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that, but I have a question real quick to staff. Regarding zoning and everything else, that will still have to come before us, if he wants to do-
The special, the special exception request would have to, that application will have to be approved by the Board of Adjustment.
By a Board of Adjustment?
Yes, sir.
But at that time, they would look at traffic patterns?
Everything.
And everything?
More detail, yeah. You're, and, yeah, there could be conditions placed on the applicant for approval.
Right.
Today-
But that's under the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sir. This is just the-
Just for the designation.
The text, the LDR, yes.
Okay, thank you. I-
And curiously, it is in the definitions. Ordinarily, you would not find a term defined, and then nowhere, you know, the art of legislative drafting is that you only use definitions if you're intending to use the definition.
Right.
The fact that it's missing, it seems to be like an omission from the code, more than anything else.
And we've never had a situation like this where that language could apply to an applicant's request.
No, not until, this is the first, not until this evening.
Okay, thank you. I stand by my second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We have a motion made to approve by Kenny Each and seconded by Charles Ernst. Any further discussion? Hearing on, the chair will call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, there being no opposition, that wraps that up. And these go down, one, two, three. And I want to thank all of you for that. Now, scheduling-wise, let's address the issues of our next commission meeting, which is set for-
October first, Mr. Chair.
October first. Is that clear? Any election business or anything going on that we know of?
Not that we know of.
That's good, okay. I'd like to go on record now, so that we keep everybody in the loop. The November meeting would be set for November the fifth. And it's tentative that I may be out of town. I might actually go away on vacation. It's remotely possible. And in the event that I actually do that, if we got lucky, we might be flying to Europe that on the first.
Yep.
Yes. And of course, we just as easily might not, so.
You want to zone exchange?
In the event that I'm not there to take your call, Arceli, I just want you to know now that I'm forecasting the prospect of being out of town.
Excused.
And Mr. Ernst, I'm pretty new on notice that you may have the opportunity to chair the November meeting.
The day after the vote, Joe, I appreciate that very much.
Of course, I can't think of a better time to pass that on to you. And for the rest of you, we certainly would hope you would seriously support Mr. Ernst in my absence, should it turn out that way.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would just like to inform the applicants that your item will be heard once again before city council on September twenty-fourth. That will be the final decision. I just-
It's an ordinance, first reading?
Yeah, it'll be first reading, but it'll be September twenty, September twenty-fourth, and then the second reading would be the October eighth. So, because it's an ordinance, it'll go to two readings. I just wanted to inform you that tonight's decision is not final. I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Can I have your question?
Yeah, yeah. Can he, the gentleman has a question.
Yes, of course. Well, given that the issue is done.
Would you recognize the speaker?
The chair will recognize you. State your name and address, and you'd rather answer questions.
Yes, my name is Jose Madriz. I live in ninety-two oh five southwest, one fifty-fourth Avenue, Miami. My question is, next step for this application is going to require a special exception, or just submit the drawings and the documents as usual?
Since this is only a recog- Since this is only a recommending board, the next step would be to go before city council for final approval. So, you have first hearing on the 24th, and then you have second hearing on October 8th. And then, once it's been added to the LDR, then the process would require that you go before the Board of Adjustment for a special exception application.
It has to be codified, it has to be part of the code before you can apply for the special exception. And the special exception, that would be heard, you will apply for that, and that will be heard before the Board of Adjustment.
Technically, I have like three meetings.
All right. So, any special documentations for application, or just regular, you know, construction documents?
Well, that, that application process, you, you do that through the building and zoning department.
Thank you.
Your work.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
All right, yes, good luck. I may, that actually entices me to visit the car museum this year, something that's sort of been on my list, but.
It's great. I've been there, I enjoyed it.
I'm way down there, and I'm trying to get myself worked around to that.
It's good.
All right, well, if there's no other business to come before the commission, the chair welcomes all of our new commissioners appointed for this due year term, and we look forward to serving with you for the next 24 months. We appreciate the fact that you're coming to the meetings, getting here on time. Your involvement, participation is very important to this, and we thank you and recognize you and commend you for your public service. And at this time, the planning commission stands adjourned.
Thank you.
Turn off your microphones, we're all set.